Public, public, public decision.
Ready? Go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll call all members of council who are present with the exception of councilor Polling, who is excused. Approval of the agenda, do I have a motion? Hearing a motion to approve the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion? And not all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Public comments, sir?
Yes, sir, or Mr. Mayor, we have the first public comment by Gina Kinman and the second one by Marissa Jacobs. Gina submitted hers testimony in writing ahead of the meeting. And then there was another piece of public comment that came in over the weekend.
Is it related to anything on the agenda, or?
No.
Okay. Gina?
Yes, hello. Yes, we did submit a letter. It, it does relate to your agenda. Agenda about the SMC Chapter 3.2 Advanced Financing Reimbursement.
Okay, is it the Ken Leahy Construction?
Yes, Agenda Item Number Four.
Okay.
That's the letter we sent in. Requesting that you pick. Choice A is to, or Choice B, I think. No, Choice A is to take the current code for these types of. Of advanced finance reimbursements and the current code is 20 years, the old code is 10 years with the option to renew at a five-year stint. We will be up on June 20th with our tenure. And we'd like to renew for five or be able to take the current code as an addendum to our agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sure.
For the record, is Ms. Kinman representing?
Ken Leahy Construction.
Okay, so you're from Cable Houston?
I'm from Ken Leahy Construction, Cable Houston is our attorney that we acquired, yeah.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Please stay on if we have any questions when we get to the agenda item.
Yes.
Marissa?
Good evening, Mayor Byrd, City Council and city staff. As you know, my name is Marissa Jacobs, I'm a resident of Scappus and I'm speaking tonight in response to the offensive diatribe directed at me by city attorney Peter Watts on the May 3rd city council meeting. I direct those comments as well to the council members who applauded this divisive and unserious rant. Over the past six months, I have attempted to be an engaged and responsible participant in our local government. I have listened and read carefully the issues affecting our community. I have brought immediate legitimate questions regarding projects in our city that appear fiscally and environmentally unwise. I have brought evidence, research and facts that independently corroborate my concerns. To check my personal bias, I surveyed hundreds of my fellow residents to confirm my concerns are shared within the community. Unfortunately, my efforts did not result in healthy, open and honest debate, rather my legitimate questions were dismissed as nothing more than bigot rhetoric. The implication, I am somehow a bigot for rejecting ill-conceived and unnecessary projects proposed by people who will not have to live with the consequences of their poorly developed ideas would be laughable if it weren't so toxic. I find it particularly amusing that a group of white predominantly male brokers are trying to play the bigotry card on the one person who has the least amount of power in this setting. While this gutter-level discourse is disappointing to me, I wish I could say I was surprised. This ugly episode underscores the prevailing trend in Oregon State and local politics, namely elected officials and bureaucrats resorting to name-calling and ad hominem personal attacks to reflect from their poor records of achievement. Speaking from personal experience, the incompetence of local government is what drove my family from Portland to Scappus. Rather than building consensus, explaining benefits and risks of proposals, my previous local government was easily kowtowed into submission by whatever narrow special interest group threatened to call them bigots, racists and homophobes. This impotent style of governance has resulted in the city of Portland becoming a war zone and national joke. My problem isn't that I fear others, there is, if there's anyone who's been treated as an other during this entire process, it's me. I'm the other who refuses to go along with rubber stamp, unaccountable, business-as-usual, crony local politics. I am the other that expects the people in your position to take your job seriously, to address questions and concerns with facts and evidence, not vague generalities. However, the greatest evidence of how much of an other I am is the speed to which the bigot card was pulled out to try to silence me. If I am not another, then why couldn't a more civilized, detailed rebuttal to my specific concerns be offered? Why the need to depace this forum by implying evil things about me that aren't true? Let's talk about what is true. I do have fears, but rather than being afraid of some vague cartoonish others invented by the city attorney as a deflection, my actual fears are quite specific. I fear local politicians unable to explain themselves in an intelligent, comprehensive manner that resort to character assassinations. I fear people in power who stifle debate and scrutiny of other decisions by deflecting to non-existent strawmen. I fear people who destroyed their own communities flee to this community and destroy ours. And finally, I fear those who sell out our community for, to a tiny handful of connected individuals to make a profit. These are real fears that cannot be dismissed by attempting to cancel or silence me. Mr. City Attorney, a city, a civilized gentleman would apologize to me for attacking my character so shamelessly and baselessly. Sadly, I had to waste my three minutes addressing this nonsense, next, next session, I'll be focused on the issues that matter, specifically the extension of the road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other? All right, we will move forward. New business, city manager recruitment. Mr. Jensen?
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to see you folks again, I'm sorry I wasn't able to be there in person today, but I think this is a matter of short order. The, what you have in front of you and what we are requesting today is an approval of two documents related to the city manager recruitment. The first is the city manager profile. Describing the attributes that you're looking for in the next city manager and that document is intended to be a foundation for us to be able to identify the potential candidates that would be a fit for the city. And it is also the foundation for us to be able to evaluate applications and, and move forward in the interview process. And then the, the hiring procedures describe the procedures that we will be going through from this point on. And as well as the schedule at the, at the very end of that. So I know we had an opportunity at the last council meeting to, at a work session to go over this material and we've made the changes that the council has requested. So we're hoping that, that this meets with your approval and once you do approve it, we will proceed on with developing the advertisement and brochure and we will be prepared to launch the position on June 1st.
Any question by council? Sir?
Hi, this is Megan Grayson, how's it going tonight?
Hi, Counselor, very good, thank you.
And can you point me in the direction of some things that were mentioned prior meeting that were now changed in the document that we have in front of us?
The main, the main change came about under appreciation for the community. We added the line about that the candidate should have a desire and a willingness to live in or in close proximity to the city. We added that line in. Other changes to the document were, were not substantive, corrections on a couple of typos and. But those, that was the main change.
And then I believe was the civil litigation that was a new bullet item added to the background check?
That is correct, under the hiring procedures, we did put in what we had originally omitted inadvertently and that is under 2.5 on page two, or I guess it's page eight of your packet. We added civil litigation as part of the background check.
I have a couple other questions, but I'm happy to wait.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, just a couple clarifying things for me, again, just still trying to understand the process and make sure that we have the wording that we are really, really capturing what we want here. And my eye is really going toward the required minimum education experience because that's really the baseline for how people are making it into that pool of people, correct?
Yes.
There, okay, so it says the city manager position requires a bachelor's degree in the following areas. Is it useful to say a bachelor's and/or advanced degree? I'm trying to think of people perhaps who maybe weren't sure they wanted to get into city management originally and they got a degree in communications or something, I don't know if that's a related field, but they do have an advanced degree. Or do you feel that advanced degrees is too much to ask of candidates as a minimum requirement?
Well, first of all, just to, just to say that we will put whatever minimum qualifications that the council would like to see. But our understanding was that you prefer having a master's degree as opposed to making it a minimum requirement. We would balance out the, if somebody say had a bachelor's degree, say in biology.
Sure.
And, but then they have a master's in public administration, that would weigh heavily in moving them forward.
Sure. Okay. Um. Under Phase Two, when it comes to the hiring process and Appendix B, 2.2 preliminary interviews. It says the consultant will conduct preliminary interviews via Zoom with the candidates and I highlighted who best fit the candidate profile as well as with any veterans who meet the position's minimum qualifications. When you say who best fit the candidate profile, for example, let's say you have 10 people and three of those people don't have. We're calling it the preferred experience, they don't have at least the 10 years, but they do still meet the minimum. You will move those three along just as you will with the ones that do have the extra 10 years or the preferred experience. As long as they meet the minimum requirements, you'll still hold them in this, in, in, in the same weight, is that correct?
So we, we will interview people who meet the minimum requirements. And that come the closest to meeting the potential, or not the potential, I'm sorry, meet the criteria that the council has set out through the, the position profile. We tend to interview between 10 and 15 candidates and so not everybody that meets minimum qualifications will be interviewed. They, we look at the candidates from the standpoint of a comprehensive viewpoint, once they pass the minimum requirements. We, we look at it in terms of the, of the qual, of the qualities that you would like to see in the candidate and we apply a point system accordingly to that. And so we will, we will weigh that as overall as opposed to any one thing that will carry them forward. We will look at, at the comprehensive, at the comprehensive perspective of that candidate or.
Those, those desired skills and attributes.
Yes.
What you're referring to?
Yes.
And. And then in 2.3 Recommendation of Finalists, provide recommendations of up to four finalists, but you will still, I just want to triple check, you will still give us the whole lot of, let's say all 10, and you'll give us your reasons why these were your four, whatever, and these, why they weren't. And as a council, we could say, well, we'd like to do seven, not the four you recommended or, sure, we'll go with your four. So there could be more than four that we choose to interview? Even if that's not your recommendation with the finalists?
Yes, I mean, that, that would be up to you as to how you would like to proceed with the finalists and you could choose to have three instead of four. But what we would bring to you is we will bring the backgrounds and the applications of all the people that we interviewed. And so you'll have the transparency of seeing everybody that we've interviewed, see their applications and be able to hear at least our rationale in terms of why we're recommending the four that we do.
Okay, thank you, I have one more question. And 2.4 Formal Council Designation of Finalists, and it just brought up a question to me, I'm not familiar with the veterans preference in terms of how you move them along in the process. Do veterans have to be placed as a finalist?
No. The, in terms of veterans preference, first of all, if any veteran meets the minimum qualifications for the position, they must be interviewed.
Sure.
And so we will interview any, any veteran that meets the minimum qualifications. At that point, we move into a rating system and in the rating system, they will receive additional points as veterans. As, as according to law and, and so the, you'll, you'll see that in terms of how we apply that going forward. And it will happen at every stage that a veteran moves up to. So if the, if the veteran is moving up into the finalist phase, then there, there will be a point system applied to that that will recognize the fact that they are a veteran at that stage.
Okay, thank you. Um, I said that was my last thing and I do not like to do this, but you had publicly said that you went through for typos and I don't normally do this, I apologize. Um, there was a period missing, um.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's okay, um, understanding of city government rules, uh, the last sentence just didn't have a period, sorry, it was the teacher in me and you had, you had, you fessed up that you were looking for them.
Yes, we try to be very vigilant about our, about our typos, so I, I'm a little embarrassed to have missed that one, but we.
No, 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 don't feel embarrassed at all, I just, you left the door open for me, I'm sorry.
I appreciate that, Counselor, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Haugen?
Good evening, Eric, Joel Haugen.
Counselor.
Uh, I, Counselor Grayson asked the one question that I had for you, so I take that off the, off the slate, but I just want to thank you for your good work and I think you provided us an excellent framework to go forward with.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? What, what I need is a motion to approve the profile.
I have a rhetorical question, I guess, the council.
Go ahead.
Um, I just want to make sure that we are all settled on the number of years being 10 years of increasingly responsible public sector experience, the only thing out there.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
I move that we accept the city manager recruitment process as presented.
Hearing a motion to accept the city manager profile as presented, is there a second? No second?
Mayor, before a second is proposed, could we take a step back and get consensus to Counselor Grayson's question?
Sure, so I will say that there's no seconds or the motion dies. And why don't we ask that question to each? She said it was rhetorical, so you requested it, what's your thought on it?
And at least 10 years, meaning 10 years being the four rather than ceiling. So I do feel as though that we jumped from bachelor's degree with at least minimum of three years as our base or our required minimum, jumping to the preferred being 10 years plus being on, beyond that. So I would be curious to hear council's interpretation of, you know, in my line of work, we would say seven to 10 years to give a little bit more flexibility in there because a decade of experience is a long time and so to open up maybe the candidate pool for our preferred areas that we, we reevaluate that period, that 10-year period as being deployed. I know that this is last minute, but this is before we would move to promote this and recruit, so I want to ensure that we're all in agreeance.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I would feel more comfortable with that saying seven years.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just don't want to, I, I want to make sure that if, this is a required minimum, I don't want people to see the preferred education and think that, oh, I'm only eight years, so I'm not going to be included. What's the point of me putting in my application? Because I, I almost sometimes feel like this preferred is there to dissuade people that are on the fence thinking, hey, maybe I want to go for it or not. I mean, the minimum, if, if our minimum is the minimum, why do we have a preferred? I mean, shouldn't it just be one or the other? And I've been thinking about this for like, since we had the discussion last time, it's just like, like this uneasy thing, like, yeah, we'll, we'll let you waste your time sending in a application if you're, got a bachelor's degree in three years, but we don't really want it. And that's what I kind of feel like that says, and that's my concern, that's not what, that's not what I'm looking to do.
Just a observation is, I think your intent in the preferred and, and maybe a fix would be that, uh, you know, that you have the minimum qualifications and then if someone has these additional things, they would get a bonus, but maybe if you were to change the and before at least 10 years, you could change it to a range, seven to 10, but you could also have or, so that people that were applying knew that, um, because it could also work with someone that has, once upon a time, city managers wouldn't get masters in public applications, so they might have 25 years' experience but no masters, so this might signal that candidate as well that they don't meet the preferred either. So if you change it to or, it seems like it would get closer to the overall intent, which is there a sort of category of bonuses that a candidate could achieve if they have these sorts of.
Or like and/or seven years would be eye comfort level. The, the higher degree and/or seven. And, Counsel, Counsel Resident?
I mean, Counselor Haugen's wife was an excellent teacher, but she was one of those that was quote-unquote grandfathered in to where, you know, master's degrees weren't required of teachers at the time, but I feel like the amount of experience or time spent in the classroom can sort of even up to, you know, an extra degree or, so I, I'm very much in favor of just the simple change of or, and if we want to change the number, that's fine, but I think we had this conversation before, as the mayor mentioned, we don't want to deter candidates from saying, well, oh gosh, I won't even be considered. And it, and it makes us feel like for those candidates, as Legal Counsel just mentioned, who maybe got into city management long ago, they're in the field, you know, what's the leg up if I go back and spend all this money on a master's degree, I'm in it and I've been in it, doesn't that kind of count for something? Thank you for that suggestion.
Counselor. Seeing.
Mr. Mayor, are you, I just want to make sure I understand what you were saying correctly. So are you proposing or is your feeling that we should completely remove the Preferred Education Experience section?
No, I just, I mean, I just don't want it to feel like someone's looking at it like, when, when I read this as it's read, preferred candidate's going to have that higher level degree and, so.
I just want to make.
If, 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 uh, I'm going to go to my favorite football team and, you know, the.
New coach.
New coach and, you know, he, he, he probably wouldn't have met the and at least 10 years part of that experience at 31 years old. But he definitely met the other side of it and he took the team to a Super Bowl and turned that organization around. So I just don't want to give someone the feeling that it's not worth their time to, no, because it's a process to put in an application, everyone who's ever done it knows and there's a certain amount of energy and I just don't want people out there that are looking to apply for the job. So that's why I said and/or or or.
Well, I, I bring it up because, and I didn't think about it until you actually said something, but when I read it, alls it really does is serve to muddy the waters. I don't want to go down the rabbit hole on this, but.
No, I mean, that's, I guess that's kind of what I was saying, it kind of does serve to muddy the waters. Mr. Mayor? Because isn't our desired skills what we're preferred? And, you know, I mean.
Well, it, the way that I look at it is like you have your minimum education experience, the applicant or the candidate, it's up to them to show their experience on their resume and their application, which is then going to be evaluated by our consultant, so it's.
And the desired, I think the desired skills and attributes, that's what we're preferring, those. I mean, if I find someone that meets our minimum, I don't want them to have not applied, what are we missing? Because people see the preferred, and I won't lie, I, I've looked at when I was, before I fired bosses and decided not to have them anymore. I, uh, remember looking at applications and, you know, okay, I meet the minimum, but the preferred sometimes is discouraging. And especially if you're, you know, I mean, if you're a seasoned veteran in the org, in this work, it's probably not as intimidating because you read it, but I think that getting that good mix of newer and more, you know, you know, Rams coach versus Coach Fisher, who career record is, I think, 67 and 67, you know. He has more experience, but could the other person be the right fit? And I just don't want to discourage that other person from not applying because of that sentence. And that's, I, I walked out of the meeting feeling that way. I mean.
So I think what we need to ask ourselves, each individual council needs to ask themselves is, when you read this, do you think this adds any value to this process, to this, uh, profile? Sometimes less is more.
I think for a leadership position, this is industry standard to show a minimum and a preferred, so I, I feel.
So I, I, I feel more comfortable with the preferred in there because we do want to see that there are master level candidates that are, uh, I guess, being recognized for their education. And in addition to that, by adding and/or at least how many years we decide on, I think, uh, helps solidify that those, those candidates at the preferred level put in a lot of time, sweat, tears, all those great things for us to be able to review. So I would prefer to keep that in, but that's just my one voice.
And I'm comfortable keeping in the and/or and dropping it to seven. And that way, or, or having or as the attorney said.
Mayor, in the, in the interest of moving this forward, why don't we just say a show of hands if everyone's fine with that? Uh, and/or seven. Is everyone fine with that?
Counselor McQ.
I'm, I'm with you.
Okay, so, so that looks like we could move forward with that.
So we'll just make the change to preferred education and/or at least seven years of increasingly responsible public sector experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandon, that gave me another viewpoint.
So what I need is a motion to approve the amended city manager profile with that change.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the city manager profile recruitment process as amended.
Hearing a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item, resolution number 21-05, water SDC rates. Mr. Donovan, welcome.
I will actually go.
Oh, hell, you. Mr. Sukal.
The night before he was. F-05. Says we. And he. Water rate. This year. This year. Higher dollar. Size is. I U A. Rates versus updated C I D. And those numbers were. Session on. Those same numbers are being presented. Session. Captain Kirkman. Off the resolution. One dash zero five.
Just what, in the future, bring your microphone closer to your mask mufflos, muffles the sound. If everyone could.
It's for the recording. We've had some comments about being able to hear. You're, we hear you just fine.
It's not us hearing, it's.
No, you're, you're very, we're good. I think on the recording, it doesn't come through as clear for everyone.
Mr. Donovan. So why don't I, before you go, why don't we go in, this, there's a public hearing, why don't we open up the public hearing? Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding the, uh, resolution number 21-05, water SDC rates? Seeing no one wanting to comment, is there anyone online that wants to comment? Okay, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Donovan.
Good evening, Mayor, counselors. Nice to see you again. Steve Donovan, 9600 Southwest Oak, Suite 335, Portland, Oregon. I'm here to answer any questions or follow-ups from our April 19th meeting. I thought we had a good conversation then. Uh, you all hit high points that I wanted to bring out. It's balance between setting SDC rates at, at a level that growth pays for growth versus not doing that and having rate payers pay for growth. You hit it on the head, so that's all I had for you tonight. I would suggest that, uh, please consider passing this resolution tonight. It's a key funding component of our water strategy, which we're going to present to you in the next agenda item.
All right, counsel. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Haugen.
I move that council adopt resolution 21-05, a resolution amending the city's scapus's water system development charge as presented.
Hearing a motion to adopt resolution number 21-05 by Counselor Haugen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McQ. Any discussion? Seeing, seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a work session on water rates. Mr. Donovan.
Good evening.
That's a weird transition.
Normally I would, uh, kind of run you through this coast to coast, but, uh, Dave and I and, and Jewel and, and Alex, we've been working on this as a team. And, uh, I'm going to call on Dave to chime in a little bit tonight. We're going to bring some things to you and we'll run this PowerPoint. Not asking any legislative action tonight, but we really are going to need some guidance from you. We're done. So we're gonna, gonna ask you to give us a thumbs up or at least a barrel of breadcrumbs of where the policy is going to go on it. So we'll, good, thank you. Uh, the obligatory why we're here. Again, going to need your direction. Uh, a quick thumbnail of a, a rate-making geek's vision of what scapus is. And go ahead, Jewel. This, this is going to be the, the real part where we're going to ask you your guidance is, is on this five-year financial plan. Because we've got a couple of opportunities to look at this. And we'll take a look at neighboring communities' rates and, uh, next steps. So go ahead. I think you're all aware of this. We talked about this last month. But the 2020 Water Master Plan, uh, identifies $55 million worth of water infrastructure needs over the next 20 years. And the rates in the SDCs are the key funding sources for that. As you all know, your utilities are not tax-funded. We don't have bake sales. We don't sell assets. It's all rate or SDC funded. So you set the guideposts for how funding is going to happen. Uh, once again, rates and SDCs. Uh, we formulated the plan and, uh, spot financial plan takes into account both capital and operations expense. And Mayor, I, I know you're all aware of this. You're keenly aware. We can't look at water in a vacuum. It's not the only bill that's on the water bill. There's sewer on the bill too. You know that we've got very expensive sewer projects coming our way. So we have to be cognizant of what sewer is doing in addition to water. So we, that's something that we've been struggling with and, uh, we want to help, get some help from you folks on that tonight too. So go ahead, Jewel. What our strategy is, is the second bullet here. And you've taken, rather than doing a, uh, true cost of service base where every year the rates bounce up and down based on whatever your, your costs are, try to come up with a levelized approach. And this has worked for you and your other utilities, and we're going to promote that tonight too. Key is, it's going to be small rate increases every year over the forecast. Now, you've, you folks are pretty smart. About 10 years ago, you put in, uh, a policy where you adjust your, your rates every year at least for inflation. Be surprised how many communities don't even do that. I've got some that haven't raised rates, spent 12 years. Now they're having to pay the piper. Now, now they're facing the cliff. So that's our strategy and we'll present a couple of options to you. Oh, from a rate-making perspective, 95% of all your meters in service are for residential, single-family or multifamily. That's no surprise. You're a residential town. Uh, 5%, the balance is for low-impact commercial. You don't have any large industrial users like an Intel or a, a large food processor. Intel uses four million gallons of water a day in Hillsborough, their chip plant. That's a big water use. But on the sales side, 80% of the water you sell is residential and 20% is commercial. This is very, very common. You've got a small group of commercial customers that do a disproportionately higher amount of sales. So you want to have a rate structure that makes sure that you incentivize these people who both conserve water. We also want to sell them water because we're a fixed-cost machine. So we've got to do this balance of conservation versus we want to sell them as much as we can. So we've come up with three scenarios. And the first one is our, our, pretty much a bare-bones plan in the, it's two and a half percent per year rate increase. And we have $300,000 per year in cash financing of capital improvements. We're not going to take on any debt in this, in that scenario. In the master plan, there was two financing scenarios. One was pay-as-you-go and that generated a 5%, we'll present that too. And then, uh, there was a 3%, which was with, with debt. So this is a very conservative plan and you kind of complement your staff for tightening the belt because they also recognize you've got a $9.2 million wastewater treatment plant upgrade coming your way that is yet unfunded. So the second one is the hybrid. Dave, you want to talk about the hybrid? Because this is kind of like your baby.
Yeah, no, so it would be the two and a half percent base rate increase. Also combine the. How. They're. On the rate after catching it up to. Five cents per gallon. Right now, we're currently at 38. Been there since. Thousand. Eleven. Too long. Us, us make water been going up and the city hasn't. Up this big gap. We would like to close back down to. For, um, print number. And adjust rates briefly for that.
And then the third one is the master plan scenario, which is 5% per year and a pay-as-you-go basis. And if we can go to the next slide, tell you what, what, what's, what's the difference? Where's, where's, where's all these, these increases? So Alex kind of came up with this one and I thought it was pretty clever. She said, for each of these scenarios, how much more cash can we get to help fund these capital projects? That $55 million nut? Dave and I were talking about this before. If you take that 55 million over 20 years, it's about $800,000 a year that we should be spending if you average that out. So what you see here is incremental increases in capital available to fund projects, both on an annual basis and over the five-year forecast. So obviously, if we're raising rates 5% per year, you're going to generate more cash for capital projects. So now let's take a look at the rate profiles. And here is the two and a half percent, nice smooth line. Right now, a customer that uses 66,000 gallons of water a month, which is the system average, pays about $57.45 a month. At the end of, it looks like we, we would opted this budget year, go to 2027, that would be $66.59. So you're, you know, you're almost $10 more over that five-year period.
Sure. One thing to keep in mind is this is based on an average. Gall on. This doesn't mean that this is minimum. This is just an average home usage for everybody, right? If you conserve, you'll fall below this. Our base rate right now is only $35.
Okay.
So there's, there's $10 basically factored into water usage that you can't. Does that family description?
Hey, both Dave and Steve, can you move your mic a little bit closer to when you're speaking? Thank you.
Okay, MJ, we saw you. Thank you. So let's go to the next one. Uh, this is the hybrid. And look at the, the immediate slope of the line. It goes from $57.45 up to $62. That's a pretty quick jump. And then it's nice and smooth as we go at two and a half percent per year after that. So really what we're talking about is this commodity charge. We've been at 38 cents per 100 gallons since 2011. Anytime we've raised the rates in the past, we've always raised the base charge. So it's not to say that we haven't raised rates in the past. We've always raised the base charge. And from a finance standpoint, that's great. That's predictable revenue. Oh, it's, it's not subject to change of consumption. But we, we want to get that consumption piece priced in better so that we can give a price signal for conservation. Right now, there's not giving a good, strong conservation signal, that six sea, sea gals out there. And then the last one is the 5% and that, that jumps us up real quick. So I'm going to shut up.
Counselor Grayson.
You had mentioned that, um, was it 2011 you said was the, um, commodity charge that had been changed?
I think it was 11 or 12. I, right, yeah. It was 11.
And you had also mentioned that our staff has done a really good job, um, with inflation increase each year. But when was the last time when we took, you know, we're looking at scenario number one going at 2.5%? You know, rate increase. When was the last time, maybe I missed that, the rate increase where we made a decision like?
Oh, I think in, in year, a couple of years ago, we had inflation that, that, that met that level. So you, you've been doing that level of, of increase, the Consumer Price Index. I was just looking at, uh, the engineering news record came today. And, uh, I know you're all aware of this, but lumber and dimensional, uh, steel and concrete, inflation now on construction materials is now 3.8% in April. Just, you know, when, when did that happen? But I also heard that, uh, the average house price of a new house coming out of the ground went up $24,000 in one year's time due to the increase in lumber costs. So we're going to be facing project costs here with capital-intensive projects that will call for lumber, will call for cement, will call for pipe. And we're probably going to be facing that. So two and a half percent that we've got dialed in here is a really belt-tightening alternative.
So I have a question on, and I, eight raising rates.
I know. You've told me many times.
Over the years, huh?
Over the year.
Yeah. Uh, but I understand the need because it is a, it's an operating separate entity. It's the water department.
Exactly.
And as we're trying to hold rates down, I, my understanding is that, has any of the federal CARES Act money considerations that the city is going to be allocated for capital improvements been considered to help tap down the rate increases a little bit over next several years? Or is it because we don't know what those numbers are?
No, we have not included that because, um, while it does look like we're going to get some of those funds, we don't have them yet. And since I have them to count on right in this moment, it didn't seem prudent to factor them in at this time.
And I don't think we're going to get $55 million for water projects.
Let me send a tweet to the president.
Yeah, just a Betsy. Betsy on the phone. So what's your, what flavor do you like there? I mean, I, I think your staff has really been prudent at that two and a half percent. Keeping in mind that we got a, that sewer project is, is, we're going to be back at you. We're going to have some bad news for you. I guarantee you, going to have bad news.
Hopefully we'll have more news on the CARES Act.
Yeah, and the CARES Act, that could be really helpful, but, uh.
Well, no, because I know that we're going to have, uh, bad news on, you know, replacement of, a sewer plant is not a cheap expenditure.
Right. And I've been doing this for 30 years and I've never seen a capital plan that ever came in on budget. How about you?
Not a full capital plan. I mean, I've seen projects because of certain, uh, enormous recessions where people were just bidding to employ their people, you know, 2009, 2010, 2011. But we're not in 2009, 2010, 2011 and the cost of goods, as you said, 3.8% inflation rate just in April.
In April.
Yeah. So, yeah, I, my feeling is, I, I understand the hybrid. My gut says it's the 2.5 for me. But I'm willing to listen to what other counselors feel.
Uh, Steve, uh, how would, how would, does 45 cents per 100 gallons compare with, uh, other communities?
Can you tell you that? Did that math?
Go ahead.
Hundred and twenty to 140,000 a year.
How much revenue?
No, 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 how, how, how does that compare with the, the rates? I, I don't, I didn't.
Right here.
Yeah, yeah. In, in, in the chart, you, you can see what the total bill is. You look at right now, those, all of these communities, they have a base charge like you, but they have a commodity charge. But. But some charge in cubic feet, some charge in thousand gallons, some charge in gallons. When we convert it all around, you're very affordable. That's the bottom line.
I'm also thinking in the context of conservation. So, you know, so bumping it from thirty eight to forty five, uh, would you anticipate that's going to stimulate more conservation?
I I think it would. We'd have to get a message out there to make sure people understand. You 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 got to tell them that, look, this this price is going up. You can avoid this cost by using less water. That message will get out in 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 the the city's bill, bill inserts and so.
And that'd be my argument for bumping that up to forty five because it will encourage conservation.
And there's another point that Dave and I were talking about. You have what's called a conservation pricing. You have tiers. And they're called inverted blocks. And the more you use, the more you pay per hundred gallons. But the first two blocks in your rate structure from zero gallons, five thousand gallons, and from five thousand one gallons to seventy five hundred gallons are all 38 cents. So there's no, there's no gradation. So what we'd like to you consider, and we'll get back to you on this. Then there's two more blocks behind that and they grow at 10% about. Started out at 45 cents, get it, get it up to 45 cents in that first block, the zero to five thousand gallons. Keep in mind that they use about 6,000 gallons is the average. And then that five thousand to seventy five hundred, maybe a couple more pennies. To give that conservation impressive. That's it. It is very, very surprising to me and I Mayor, do you remember back in 2011 when we did this? I remember.
Which year?
2011.
Oh, 2011.
You remember that?
We were that was the one where it went sideways and we
We went.
Had a committee and.
Yeah, and I mean, it was it was tough times. I mean, it was a very tough economy. We went round and round on that. Do you remember why we left those two blocks the same price?
I think that it was mostly because that was the council's discretion at the time.
Yeah.
They weren't.
I remember we were sitting here going through it and we spent a lot of time on it.
Well, I I remember that we found a property in town that had been being overcharged for at least 10 years and I remember about $20,000 and the city actually did the right thing and paid them in a check back, entire amount, which a lot of cities will say, oh, we'll only do the last three years, but I feel like doing the right thing is doing the right thing. But yeah, I that's the one where we ended up with a committee. There is a lot of and we ended up, I think that's what it came out with is because of that.
Yeah, yeah. And and I remember that even just doing that, the the increase, we did like three years worth of increases. Uh, we we programmed them in because everybody was so mad at each other.
Is that the first year that we I think I brought up bringing up the annual increases?
Yeah. That's what the genesis of that.
Yeah.
So.
Well, no, the annual, the CPI increase.
Right, the CPI. So what do you guys think? What what's what's what flavor do you like?
That's right.
Council Miller.
So I see one hybrid scenario on here, but it feels like there could be additional hybrid scenarios on here. Was were there any other hybrid scenarios that you guys contemplated?
No, because they they we we kind of set the meets and the bounds. The bottom was the two and a half percent, the top was the five percent. Everything in between would probably just be variations on that theme. I think Dave's point was was really compelling to me that we hadn't changed that commodity rate since 2011 and we're not giving a conservation price signal. And that that was our 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 shot to show you what what we thought would be a a good hybrid approach.
And so one of the reasons why I I know it's speculative. One of the reasons why I like scenario one and but I also want to discuss those uh act those boxes, the $38 for the first two and maybe make some adjustment to that. But I'm relatively confident we are getting some money from the feds. I know because it's been reported, talked about. We don't know what it can go to. We know it's going to be water in sewer areas because there's a lot of infrastructure, you know? And I've just feel like $900,000 difference. I think I feel comfortable that we're going to get that. That maybe we do some sort of hybrid, not maybe the 45 cents total, but maybe that's the 45 cents for five thousand one to seventy five hundred. Then it goes up from there and you leave under eight, under 5,000 at 38 cents or some, you know, some mix.
And I want to tell you right now, you you they're gonna, I know you're gonna say and you're gonna say, well, what's the math and what's what's everybody else do? And the math is it's all up to you on these conservation pricing signals. Everybody does it differently. Generally, it's about each block prices about 10 to 15% more. But I've seen it all over the place. I've seen some where uh there's a penalty block. It's 50% higher than the base block. And I'm that's that's punishing, but you go to Arizona or Southern California or Las Vegas, they have got like water police down there and their price signals are severe.
You look at the water, you get charged.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. So we're blessed. I mean, that we've got a really moist climate here. But you are constrained on water.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I I really like your idea of, you know, keeping the 38 cents per hundred gallons for the first 5,000 and then bumping it up to forty five. So that hybrid approach to me makes a lot of sense. It's going to really encourage.
Complete policy call on your part.
That 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 to me, I think makes.
Well, then you'd have those other bumps above that.
You'd have bumps above that, right?
Something I would like to point out, all of you, to make your decision, though, is everything that you take away or home in 300,000 a year, that is our capital budget. I guess that per the master plan, we should be spending eight plus per year to keep our system from failure. A lot of aging infrastructure in 300,000, unfortunately, in this day and age, does not buy you very many feet of pipeline.
Buy less than us.
Bear in mind, we have to be thinking in the future and that's why we're having this discussion is down into where the city is going to be in 15, 20 years from now. Don't want to see you guys in a worse scenario than we already are. Trying to hit that happy medium where we can still move forward. It's not the perfect world. But we're thinking as we reevaluate this scenario in three to five years, see where things are at, see how grants, other income sources are factored in, that curve can lay down. Say it two and a half, it could go wherever, but for now, got to get that ball rolling.
Right. I'm also thinking on on the kind of the citizen political side of this is that, you know, if you if you encourage conservation by maintaining that's 38 cents per hundred gallons, then you penalize the folks that use more water. Uh, I I think you can argue that.
Well, it's compelling logic.
Yeah.
It's if everybody understands the more you use, the more you should pay.
Yeah.
It's a basic tenet.
And anyway, that'd be my preference to build that into this into a hybrid scenario.
Got it.
Well, and I don't know. I mean, I I yeah, I think for me, the hybrid would be really looking at those steps. I don't know if we jump the bottom one up to forty five or the five thousand to seventy five hundred to forty five and there's some lower, higher, higher, but take a real close look at those steps.
Well, what we did, and I take that back, we did do a hi- another hybrid is we did, uh, well, I said, start out at 38 cents on that main block and after five years, get it up to 45 cents. I I showed that out and and that generated uh not much more revenue than what we saw in the two and a half percent case. Because most of your water sales comes from your your base charge.
Question. We are currently doing a CPI adjustment for water and sewer. Or
Right.
We'll continue to be doing that CPI adjustment during this increase.
Sure, right. And Alex pointed this out. She had she had a great question. Is this in addition to the two and a half percent or is it just two and a half?
So are these numbers just showing two and a half on the chart or just showing uh two and a half plus what?
No, it's just.
Estimated?
Just two and a half.
Just two and a half. And that's a great question because if the CPI comes in at 4%, we would actually you'd be raising it more than what our recommendation is.
Which is another consideration to think about when we're looking at rates because at some point the CPI is going to be, I can't remember if we capped it or if we didn't cap it.
I don't believe it's capped, but but for instance, I think this coming year, it's only what, one point?
Yeah, the consumer prices are 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 less than, less than two percent right now.
That's so, no, I thought we were on the construction price index.
No, you're on the consumer price index.
Are you sure?
We're on the E and we're on the E and R.
We're on the E and R.
E and R for rates?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I I apologize. I thought it was.
We changed.
Regardless, we we looked at that.
It changed. Okay.
It's under 2% for this coming year.
Okay, well.
Next year, it could be a lot higher.
It could, but but again, I think what what, you know, we were trying to get at was a stable
Right.
Revenue that was guaranteeing, you know, a base minimum of capital.
Yeah, and I'm not arguing against looking at the rate increase, but I would like to be able to see some way to drink this thing. Is there not a way to project out that that's going to look like so we can have a better, it just seems like that this number is just based on the two and a half percent. But over the next five years, the CPI could be two and a half percent.
Right, right.
And so that would be coming in.
Right. But a resolution be written to basically reflect that, you know, would be a minimum of two and a half percent or more if the CPI was higher or something like.
You got a lawyer here.
I think we can.
Why we pay him the big bucks?
Write it with some level of flexibility.
The lesser of.
Yeah.
You could have, we could write it that way where it would be the lesser of our our minimum requirement or uh, what what the actual inflation comes in at. Is that what you're driving at?
Well, I think they're driving at that if the inflation comes in at 4% and they're at two and a half, that that the 4% is is what they would want to go.
Right.
Go to. So it would it would be the two and a half percent or inflation, whichever is greater, is how that would be structured. If I could make an observation, though, um, this these are based off of Portland State University's 2020 population census estimate. Um, and this year, we're going to get, hopefully by the end of September, the actual census numbers. In other communities that I represent, um, it appears that the Portland State Census numbers have been fairly dramatically off. In one community, there are more registered voters than Portland State's population estimate. Practically, if I don't know if that's true in scampus, I suspect it might be because it it's most true in rapidly growing suburban and rural areas. What that new number, if it comes in dramatically higher, will do to these numbers is it will bring down the average um, B gallon per uh household. Because if you have 6,000 households instead of five, and I'm just making up numbers, but if you have 6,000 instead of five, they're basing the rates off of that Portland State Population Estimate. So if we're serving a bunch more houses and yet our 20 year forecast is the same, that would true up some of these numbers. And then I just point that out because in in one.
I, Peter?
Yeah.
I would assume that we're basing it on actual water meters.
Yeah, that's nothing to do with Portland State, sorry.
Not the, not the population.
On page.
No, no, we're not.
Yeah, okay, all right.
We're on rate.
Okay.
Yeah, I was like going, I think we're basing this because we know how many.
We know exactly how much water we sell and who we sell it to. That's.
We also project out based on the number of homes that we're expecting to build in each year's budget, how that's going to expand.
Right.
I guess the one thing I want to say on my behalf and then just working on this, about a minute of time on it. We have to have to get something off the discussion to start with. Obviously, we're comfortable with wherever. I I explained to you my concern with the future. But those numbers can be moved, those zones. We talked about that. We talked about making it zero to seventy five hundred gallons. Other ones, that other small one really didn't matter. However, it started hypothetically, say forty up to 5,000, forty two to 5,000. And we're open to whatever, but we just want to see things over manner city in a healthy scenario in the future.
And and I think that's the most important thing is.
Yeah.
In a city healthy.
We're we're the we don't want to see any more than anybody could have.
So in terms of the the ranges and the associated rates to those ranges, how do we compare to these other cities? Are are we in line with their ranges on their use and their their blocks, if you can recall that?
Yeah, uh, you're very affordable. I mean, your commodity rate, your 45 cents is a good deal. 38 cents is a good deal.
And my understanding is that Vernonia is still going to be going up quite a bit. I don't know if that's on their sewer side or if that was on their, because you know, they had to move plants completely out of the flood zone.
Well, Forest Grove, Hillsborough and Portland, uh, they're all going to be going up crazy high and because Hillsborough is creating a whole new water supply. All of their water is going to come from the Willamette River.
Yeah, that's right. A lot of people are not are ceasing to buy water from Portland.
Right. And that Portland is really in a in a pickle because they used a strategy of having all of their wholesale customers charge more than the city customers so that they could keep their rates down. And you send a price signal to Gresham and to Hillsborough and to Beaverton that said, hey, go build your own. So that's what they're doing. So now Portland has the Bull Run watershed, which is a beautiful, pristine watershed. They also have to treat their water now for cryptosporidium and they lost a huge portion of their customer base. So their costs are, their their rates are going up. So everybody's is going up. Uh, the West Side folks here on in the Portland area are going to see significant increases as that as the Willamette Water Supply Project goes on. And that's a multi-billion dollar project over 10 years.
I always think it's amazing that I think you might have been the first one to bring it up to me or somebody did, but the the amazing thing about water and sewer is that the amount you're paying is still about two cents a gallon. And that you for two cents a gallon, you're able to turn on your water, you get clean, fresh water. And when you're done with it, it goes away.
Yeah.
All for two cents a gallon. There's no other product that you can buy at any store at that kind of commodity rate. And we always just phrase it in, here's what your monthly bill is. Well, here's what you're really paying for that service. Think of it like filling up your gas tank. And I mean, we're asking the citizens of this town for three cents a gallon when they buy gas. For water and sewer, we'll do it for two. But Council Osowski?
Uh, yeah. Do we have any understanding of what the residential average gallons per month are right now?
Sixty. That's sixty hundred, sixty sixty units of 100 gallons or 6,000 gallons.
Per per resident?
Residents.
Okay. And so in looking at that, for me, it would be a lot, I guess, it would be an easier understanding of the cost impact onto our rate ratepayers. Understanding the economics of where our current, where our economy currently sits. We don't want to negatively impact people that are currently struggling by putting, you know, a a large, I mean, it's in the year one, almost a two and a half to 5% increase, depending on which option we were to go with. Right? And then looking out over the duration of till 2027, we're looking at a pretty substantial increase based on our current numbers. And so what I would like to do is see what those blocks would be in seeing if we can play with the cost per block. Is am I saying that correctly in the sense of the different tiers of how many gallons? And so as look to incentivize conservation, that we are not going to be putting the cost burden onto our to the ratepayers that are currently conserving, right? And that we're also gradually increasing that over time and to reach this, this, I guess, 45 cents plus potential uh growth in the revenue generation. Be able to meet that eight hundred doll- eight hundred thousand dollar uh operating budget for our systems. And so I I think for me, I would just like to see some additional scenarios, and I hate to ask you to go to the drawing board because feel like this is almost being shared across the board too evenly. It's distributed, the weight is distributed or the cost is being distributed distributed onto those who are inner utilizing less of the water. And so I would rather see it as a tier system to say if you're going to use more water than the average person, you should be paying at a higher rate. Right. What the person is who's trying to do the right thing and not water their lawn at 3:00 PM in August. So so to me, I think that would be valuable.
You're you're looking for a bigger separation between those.
Thank you, David.
I get it. Because right now, like I was trying to explain earlier, the minimum that somebody is going to pay is $34.55. Whatever they use after that, that's purely their discretion as to how high that goes. That's relatively easy to do if we want to home in off like a um, and if you want, I we can use the current blocks that are established to figure that out. Um, but I guess really what is going to need be needed is direction from council. What is a comfortable operation for that? Where where do you see? What is a comfortable operation for that, where where do you see? Should see these.
Right, and your system now is you've got four blocks, you've got these four four buckets. The first two buckets are the same, right? Thirty eight cents, we talked about that. And the next bucket goes up to about ten thousand gallons, and that's about ten, twelve percent more. Then the next bucket is another fifteen percent above that. Uh, so what we're talking about here is fifteen, call it fifteen percent increments between each of those blocks is what you've got now. And that's that's a pretty fair system that that gives a clear price signal. I I, otherwise, you're starting to get punitive if we get in these outer block, outer blocks. And the other thing is, the residential customers, the sixty average up here that we're talking about, this preponderance of those people follow right around that middle. There's very few people out on the curve where that are using your 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 August three P M. water, there's not a whole lot of those. So what we're talking about is getting those blocks that are fair, but they're not going to generate a ton of revenue. I said that thirty four dollars and sixty five cents, if you don't use a drop of water, that's where most of your revenue comes from right now. Doesn't come from the commodity side, comes from the base side, because for all these years, we've been raising the base charge, not raising the commodity charge. So regardless of what we do, unless you reduce that base charge, and then his head's going to explode. We're, that's where we are. So now we're trying to get on the escalator and start moving more toward a consumption based component. So we're going to have to take baby steps on that. We've gone for so many years of just raising the base charge.
I think for me, it'd be very good to be able to look at those four different blocks and understand what, on the residential side specifically, what percentage of our population falls within those four different blocks.
Can do that.
And so then we can look at the tiering to better understand what should that growth between each blocks of two and a half percent to five percent be able to even out our books so that you're going to know that there's money for improvements moving forward, that it's not going to be a huge cost burden onto our ratepayers, and that it's not a shock. I think that's another thing that we always, we can pass something here and it gets communicated, but then until somebody opens up that utility bill, that's when the concerns really start to come into our uh our arena. So I think that's what would help me is kind of having that understanding that we can be very strategic in this, but also knowing that we're trying to move the impact off of those who are already trying to do the right thing.
Really what you're talking about, and man, this is geek speak, I'm sorry, we're going to create a frequency distribution. We're going to look at the observed consumption patterns of our residential customers, and how many people fall in that first block? How many fall in the second and the third? We can count noses because we know how much water we sell them, and we'll come back and we'll provide that for you.
Okay. So for me, I'd like to step back even a little bit more from that, and I think it supports what Brandon's asking for too. And and I guess um if we have the data to do it, what would be nice is on a on a chart to see how many customers we have within increments of like, I don't know, thousand, five thousand, so uh along that line, and then we can take that and and also quantify our blocks too.
Absolutely.
And then I think that foundational data will be very valuable for forming.
Because the data might tell us how many blocks you should have. That's usually how we create these, when I've created them in the past, I do exactly that. I look at a frequency distribution, I say, how many people are, and you're going to see these natural breaks. And most everybody, if you think about the bell curve, preponderance of your customers are going to fall within one standard deviation of that mean. And I can tell you right now, it's going to be sixty seven percent of your residential customers are going to fall in one standard deviation of that sixty. And then ninety three percent will fall within two standard deviations, and ninety nine percent will fall in three standard deviations. We really need just three blocks.
Well.
But we'll see.
That's that's my point, too, that will and that will inform our decisions on, I think, multiple things going forward to include maybe restructure, reevaluating those blocks, and I think it will give us more information to um just feel better about our decision in general about how we're impacting these these different persons.
Conversation. Good, I'm glad we're we're starting to talk about these blocks because we've we stayed away from it for a long time because, you know, we just, it was easy to do the base charge, and your finance director is doing backflips because she's got real predictable revenue. But it's not sending a good message to conserve. And they they pointed this out, and I mean, he was right on point. Said, the best way for us to manage our capital projects is to not build any more wells. The best way of not building any more wells is to conserve water. So we'll get back to you, uh, I'll get with Alex, we'll get on your your agenda. Time is of the essence, we we do want to kind of get a July first increase if we can make this happen, a plan happen. If it doesn't, it won't, it's it's up to you. This policy analysis around the blocks is right on point.
Vice President.
Um, I had the same question as Tyler, you know, why four? And um, Counselor Lasowski brought up, um, you know, making kind of evening out those blocks. I'm fully in favor of this hybrid form, I just think it it takes some digger deeping, digger deeping.
You're deeping, you're a deeper, aren't you?
Yeah.
Monday.
Come brain, um. It's up at four forty five today, that's very early for me. Um, but I I I totally sense the urgency and I I know that this is very important. I am just so concerned about not having clear communication with the public before they get that first bill. And that's the only thing that doesn't settle with me, so I don't know what it looks like in terms of prepping something to go out, not necessarily with specific numbers, but giving a narrative about when these last things occur, you know, kind of like we did with the pool. This is where we've been, this is where we need to go, and I think if you give a narrative of the harsh reality of what our 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 um the structure looks like and the need for these dollars, um, I think that's very important to communicate. So um, you know, our newsletter only goes out once a month, so it's kind of like, I I know that it will just, I'm pretty sure the first point of communication will be when they see that first bill, and that's unfortunate. But um, anything we can do past that or prior to that, I think we need to think about.
Well, that's, you ever heard the Will Rogers theory? Will Rogers said there's two ways to get somebody's attention, hit them in the head with a two by four or send them a bill. So we'll get back to you as soon as we can, uh, and hopefully we can breathe this in for a landing. I think this is going to be interesting to see this frequency distribution, and and we'll get that back to you. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, number four, uh, Scapus Municipal Code, Chapter three point two zero, Advanced Finance Reimbursement, Council Interpretation Required, Mr. Watts.
Right, so if you recall back in um April of twenty nineteen, we uh substantially uh overhauled our section to add a lot of clarity to it. And what our former section did was it had a ten year automatic um period when this was in effect, and then it allowed to five year increments uh that the developer could apply for in order to get that reimbursement district extended. And uh, what Counselor Kessie said, my recollection is at the time, was what I had brought to you as a council was a ten year and then a ten year reup. And what he said at the time was that there were people that would wait the ten years to see if there was a reup and then and not develop when they may have wanted to develop in year eight, and if it didn't develop in year um by year ten and the and the person reup for five years, then it would kind of incentivize them to wait again. And so what he suggested was we just do a twenty year period, that that person wasn't going to wait around to see whether the financing um district was going to be extended or not, and I think council, I think it was unanimous, I believe that made good sense. Uh, we've had a situation where we have someone who's um a ten year period is is coming to an end. We looked at it, um, that because we changed it from the reup to the twenty years, that language is no longer in there. In looking at the council's intent at the time of that, it was um to incentivize neighboring properties to develop. So I think the most plausible interpretation of this, and there's three, I think the most plausible is that if you had a um, if you had one of these in effect at the time that the code change went into effect, what it essentially did was add ten years onto the end of your first ten year period. Because the idea was that people would have the certainty of the twenty years. But you are entitled to vast deference in the interpretation of your code, and I'm entitled to substantially less deference in the interpretation of your code. So in order to confirm whether that was your intent and that you, that anybody who had one of these um reimbursement advanced finance reimbursement district agreements in effect, that that was extended ten years from the expiration of the first ten years, you would need to make that as a council. Um, so uh we need for you to make, um, there's three options there. Um, and the uh alternative is if you want to add the language in to allow this to happen, we could add the language in, but it would just be for not very many. Um, and in my mind, from a legal risk perspective, it it makes sense just to grandfather everyone in with this um twenty year period. But again, you're you're the ones tasked with interpreting your code.
Mayor.
Counselor.
Uh, Peter, uh, for the twenty year, uh, if we go with the twenty year scheme option, uh, it's, you anticipate some cost or consequence to doing that?
Well, I think that um, if if we were just to say that the ones that were in a ten year period were stuck because there's no longer, no longer is a language to extend, so if they were stuck, the practical um impact would be that, I mean, the whole idea of this was fair share, so if a developer for the costs in order to benefit their neighboring property owners, if their neighboring property owners developed, they would, they shouldn't be able to get, I mean, the the term that's always used in the hearings is the free ride, and so that they would have to pay their proportional share. And this incentivizes the developer who thinks, okay, I'm going to invest more than I'd like to now with the belief that over a twenty year period, I'm going to be reimbursed as these neighbors develop. I mean, that's kind of the intent of this tool. Um, so what the that would mean, i- it would be no additional cost to the city. Um, but what it would mean is is these developers aim out of that first ten year period, then their neighbors would be able to develop without paying a proportionate share. Um, so as far as revenue to the city, I don't, I don't really see any impact, it's more of a fairness the um original person that kind of bet on the city and bet on the project.
So the bottom, the bottom line, it's more equitable to extend this to a twenty year.
Yeah, because under the former code, they were allowed to get the twenty years, they just had to apply for it twice, and you know, council could say, well, our our ideas changed on this. Um, but under the former code, it was always intended that they would be able to have a maximum of twenty years if they jumped through the hoops and if council kind of agreed.
Thank you.
Before, I was just going to say that I was around when this project was done, and it just seems completely unfair to Mr. Leahy and his company to, when you we originally put together this advanced funding reimbursement project to tell them that, yeah, you'll be able to come back in ten years and extended another ten years or five year increments or whatever the code read, and then two years before their time is up, change the code and turn and look at them and say, sorry, there's no way to expand it, that just, that, to me, that just doesn't sound right. And so I I'm in favor of extending it to where they can just do the twenty years. I'm not sure how many more properties are left that haven't paid. I figured, I figured she would know.
Uh, yes, we have one um lot left. If you go to your, I don't know if it's on your slide or not, it's your exhibit, um, it's just a little sliver there, but it does add up for us financially. Um, it's on Exhibit A, the small sliver that's shaped like a triangle at the bottom. Um, yeah, that one still has not developed, and uh we've we've done some trading with them and lowered their uh balance uh fifteen thousand from the beginning, eighty five that was financed. But now with interest, they're up to a hundred and twenty thousand as of the end of April, so.
That's the one next to Flotanos?
Yeah, you know, I should have wrote on my chart here, but yeah, because of that Second Street improvements, we got Goodwill, Flotanos, Leshwa, Bymark, all those people in there.
Didn't have Wana.
Yes, and we and we just have that one little sliver there that's not developing yet. And like you said, when I called in to talk to um the the secretary there, she said, I wonder if that developer is just waiting for this to expire? And I panicked, like, oh, no, wh- what do we do if we lose out on that because we've been financing it all these years?
Yeah, no, it, when you originally were given the reimbursement, I hope council is going to agree that you were told that you were be able to come back and we should honor that agreement.
Yes, that would be wonderful.
I was just curious which one it was left because I know that the city paid off the one, the property that we purchased and then and sold to Wana, and the other ones have developed, so they had to pay.
Yeah, originally one million nineteen, I believe, that we financed, yeah.
Counselor Lasowski.
Uh, to city staff, do we know how many developers would fall within the grand following based on the timeline?
No, I, that, I'm not sure. The the entity that's used this the most, I believe, is the city itself.
And we actually do have.
Right, so so we're, we're going to be, we're going to lose out on, the city would, I think the city would be most impacted just because we've constructed other projects. Um, as far as how many other private developers out there, there, there may be a couple, um, but I don't have that number.
I'm not sure if they were after the change or not.
Right.
Minimal, it would be a good way of saying that, right? I mean, granted, we haven't had a huge boom in development.
Right, and you know, and as Peter mentioned, you know, those, it would have likely been council approved, it of course, would have likely ended up in that twenty year range anyway.
I think that's my point, is just understanding how many people would be impacted by this. How do we, we reach out to these groups of something or to these developers if this was adopted and to inform them of these uh this change?
Um, I mean, this would have been advertised just as any other code change would have. It is, you know, on the developer to actually come back to make sure that that's extended, if that's something they're interested in. Um, and as Peter mentioned, actually, I think a lot of the ones that are outstanding right now are the cities.
Anything else, counsel? Is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Lasowski.
I move uh to adopt Option B for excuse me, option A, applying S M C three point twenties, twenty year expiration retroactively.
Hearing a motion to adopt Option A, applying Scapus Municipal Codes, three point twenties, twenty year expiration retroactively, is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion was made by Counselor Lasowski, seconded by Counselor Haugen, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item, Heritage Park Fountain Discussion. So this one was me, uh, just looking at the latest information coming out about the, really about COVID and, you know, the data, you know, I, and I'm going to use a New York Times article that uh discussed how outdoor, unless you're shoulder to shoulder, being outdoors is point one percent chance of contracting the virus because it doesn't like the sun, doesn't like ultimate ventilation that you have outdoors. It's the place where we want people to be, and I just feel like that traditionally, we had turned the fountain on on Earth Day. I just would like to, you know, start to begin to look like we're back, getting back to normal by getting that fountain back on. You know, and I don't think that there's any guidance that says we can't have it on at this point. And I think there's new guidance coming down, especially since they're telling vaccinated people they don't even have to wear masks almost anywhere, so. There you go, see? But you have your papers, no, I'm just kidding. But you have your papers. No, I'm just kidding. So I just wanted to get council's feedback on, maybe giving some direction to staff of what we feel or what we should go. And I think Peter wanted to add a few thoughts. Dave might have some thoughts. But to me, it's just, especially, you know, and I started this conversation before the CDC came out with their new recommendations on masks this week. I just think that when you actually look at what's being talked about from data that was out there, that we want people outdoors. Transmissions were happening indoors, not outdoors. Because it's not a good environment for the virus to spread. So just thoughts.
I couldn't speak on why it was initially turned off. And when that decision was made, COVID was new.
Yeah.
Didn't know what this was going to fester into. Masks were required regardless of where you were, six feet was regardless of where you were. It was, it was not a plausible place for people to congregate, kids to be near each other, especially getting masks that are saturated. Know they were going to be ripping them off. We just saw it as one big.
We didn't, we didn't know.
Yeah, so, so that was the determination as to why it was initially shut off. And regulations haven't really deregulated today to change that dynamic other than, I don't think that for masks outdoors, but still, I think they encourage the six feet and things. And so city to turn something on that could potentially encourage that zone to be less than what is recommended. We as staff still felt it was, should stay status quo until something comes down that says otherwise. There's new regulations coming out, obviously, as far as we're concerned, I think we're open to whatever, you know, you guys choose. But from us being just staff and trying to look out for the city's best interest, that's kind of where we. Peter? Sure, I mean, like a lot of things, there's some competing interests. One is that I think the fountain's an amazing amenity that brings a lot of people joy. Whether it's children that are running through the fountain or whether it's adults that are listening to music and lights and all of that. You know, the, the CDC is, is listed, the guidance that they've listed, the governor's order is still in effect in Oregon. As the mayor points out, the CDC says there's very little risk of, of outdoor infection. But, you know, what, what the governor is charged all of us with is preventing people from congregating essentially. It's that, you know, she doesn't want large, larger crowds and certainly not indoors, but, but not outdoors as well. And so it's, it's the, the optics of, the optics of doing something that would make it very attractive for people to congregate versus the pleasure that people derive from enjoying the fountain is really what we were looking at. And, and the other thing is we had some really nice weather last week, but that isn't what we normally get in, in Oregon in May. And so one of our thoughts was to just wait until the weather gets a little bit warmer. And hopefully at that point, the governor will release new new guideline. And, and my main concern isn't some sort of community spread. If, if people were outdoors in the sun at a fountain, it's more that that would be on the news or something like that. And suddenly, you know, we would get shut down. And, you know, that's, that's something to, to avoid. Because they, if there are extra regulations that go on to us, you know, that's something that could impact restaurants and businesses. So that was really my, I, I, on some level, share the mayor's frustration and, and frustration of members in the community that want to be outdoors and went to all the scientific data. And it's a matter of weighing that against the directive to the city to take steps to prevent people, people from congregating. It's just that you as council, if you can provide us with guidance, that would be whether it's to open it now, wait for a new governor's order, to wait till June, you know, when it's a little warmer. It's really up to you.
So I'm just going to add that, you know, and since this conversation's happened, you know, I had a friend's younger sister was tried to commit suicide. But so there is another factor that we have to start considering that Oregon Health Authority and the governor have been blinded to. And that's mental health. You know, during the lockdowns, I had to go and in the middle of the night, go to a friend's house because he was having anxiety breakdowns. You know, and we're just completely ignoring that. We're now seeing that the data is telling us that contact isn't where it's spread, spreading close quarter contacts with bad ventilation, and we're not doing that outdoors. And, you know, sometimes we just have to push the governor's office. I mean, the OHA and the governor at this point are wrong, period, end of story on this. And, you know, they need to catch up to what the data is telling us and quit, you know, quit treating it like we were last year. I agree, a hundred percent ago, a hundred percent. A year ago, when we closed everything down and that was shut down because we didn't know what we were facing. That was last year's science. That's last year's data that we didn't know or we knew or we didn't know. We now know based on everything we're being told by by the data and and people in the profession, that outdoor is not the danger. And it just, to me, there's that mental health aspect for the community in this, in our community that seeing something coming back alive, we could still post signs that say, please keep distance. But I mean, I'm just looking out for the mental health of people that I know people were struggling over this last year. And, you know, we have to provide that leadership to say, you know, it's wrong to continue to keep us down like this. It's wrong. It's wrong to keep, you know, harming people's mental health over things that we know are no longer true. We now know the truth about it. We don't know, we didn't know a year ago, and I understood what we were doing a year ago. But now today, we're, we're in a completely different station with the knowledge that we know and how we can proceed forward. And it's just government shouldn't get in the way of people's mental health because they can't write a policy fast enough or they can't react to the new data fast enough. That's terrible government. Yeah.
Are we aware of any other communities that has a similar feature? To me, I look at it, the park amenities. So if the public is going to go out in the park, currently go over and stand right next to the fountain, even though it's not running. And our guidelines suggest still staying socially distanced with even the CDC's mandate, or not mandate, but the ordinance around masks and people taking them off that are vaccinated. So I, I would be curious, are there any other communities that have something similar that we're aware of? That has opened it, up, open access to that in their community?
I should have been paying more attention of the downtown Portland Fountains.
Yeah, and I drove in, and I haven't seen those on, but I could understand Portland.
I know one doesn't, but that one was getting worked on and but, you know, I mean.
Because to me, I think of it as a feature. And so if families choose to go walk through it on a warm day, it's like a lot of things, it's the individual choosing to take that risk on their own.
Yeah, and to me, a year ago, we had the playgrounds closed down. They're no longer closed down. You know, they're open. To me, this is just another feature of like the playground. It's going to attract no more people than the playgrounds attract. I mean, when you mention.
Parks are being used by youth sports. Sorry to interrupt you, but I agree, I'm in greens.
Mr. Mayor, why, why don't we just go ahead and plan on opening and things June first? And the interim period is probably ninety percent probability that the governor's going to have new guidance, so.
Please set a date so everyone knows.
Yeah, so June first is going to open. And we'll probably be covered, it'll be moot point by that point in time anyway. And we've got something to look forward to.
What's over here?
Makes me extremely itchy. And I was going to suggest we come back and talk about it again in June and not settle on a date right now. I do not feel comfortable with June first for many reasons. But I think for me, I'm thinking of the standpoint of the city. We're encouraging people to gather in a place where but then again, it's a parent's choice whether they want their kid to run through water without a mask and be around other kids or close to families. I just find it, I find it difficult to make certain decisions when I don't even send my kids to school right now. Only because of the mandates that are required by schools. And so it's just very hard for me to balance what our, what our role is and what we're being told and what I can and can't do with my own children in a public school setting. Yet now we can just free for all it in our city parks. And I'm not suggesting that that's a negative. I'm just saying it's a very imbalanced. I think that old playgrounds opened like two weeks ago, the actual playground. I mean, kids have not been able to play on equipment. So I personally feel more comfortable safety wise, if, if there was something a little more written out or we waited a little bit from the state. I also don't think the weather is super warm right now, so committing to a date at this point, I don't feel is a necessity. But I can be an outlier and I'm okay with that.
I mean, skate park gets used, every piece of playground equipment gets used. You know, I mean.
Yeah, the reasoning's all there.
Yeah, it's just, it doesn't make any, to me, it does.
It makes sense.
Yeah.
Hear you.
I kind of feel a bit of a quandary like President Grayson does, but at the same time too, if you do look at the fact that, you know, the, the play equipment is open in the parks and there's, I mean, it's like the one outline thing that is not open too. So for me, that kind of pushes me on to the side of setting the June.
I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other. It's, you know, to me, we.
What if we let you be the one that gets to turn it on?
There we go.
You know, excited or?
Well, it does cost us money to run that thing. Maybe we should save some money. What does it cost us to run that?
Uses around fourteen thousand gallons a month.
Yeah.
And I, I, that's another factor. I mean, if we really waited until the weather was nice, at this point, people are just going to get excited. It's open and go push the button and see the water back on.
I will say what happens in the off seasons when it's cold is that's exactly what happens. People turn it on just to watch, watch the water go down the drain.
Wait once. But we do always shut it off in the fall to protect the pipes.
As somebody who just came to you to talk about water rates.
If we look at it from that standpoint, what are the, I mean, I'm just looking at, so if June first, the last day of school for kids is June tenth in the Scapu School District. So the next, the first couple of weeks of, of June, really, people should still be busy with school and sports activities or whatever's happening at home. I'm not saying that, you know, we wouldn't still take our kids, but I'm just trying to think, finance wise, you know, I, I know we've turned it on in April and people just go and push it.
I'm really not concerned about a two hundred dollar per month for five, six months.
So are we, do the governor's guidelines prevent us from turning that on? Or, or have we just turned it off ourselves?
Initially, it was turned off for guidelines and, and there's never been guidelines that.
Governor's never said one way or the other about the fountain then, but we, she's had some restrictions on playground equipment, that, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
It would fit into that category, it seems. So has playground equipment opened up?
Yes.
Entirely?
Yes. Skate parks open. Hallfields are open. Kids are playing soccer.
But they're all wearing masks though.
Well, the new guidance doesn't require, even the state of Oregon used to have guidance for high school athletes to wear a mask until a girl passed out running. And again, the, the data is the data, is the data. It just doesn't show this is where transmissions happen.
I guess my feeling would be, I think President Grayson makes some logic there. We just open it up when school's out. It'd be a good fit to me. It's, that makes it the middle of June, June fifteenth.
Summer solstice is the twenty first. Said summer solstice is the twenty first, we could all go out there before the meeting and turn it on together.
Have a little festival. Yeah, I like that too.
I'd just hate to see good weather before the twenty first of June, which we normally get. And it's not only the good weather, it's the symbol that we're getting back to normal. You know, some of the great studies, one of the studies out of like South Korea, where there was that big outbreak at that church early on, and they went and studied how these people that were attending an outdoor church contracted it. You know what they found? The people that, people that took public transportation are the ones that caught the virus. So they caught it more likely in the bus, in a confined area, going to the church and not at the church that was in an open air area. You know, the, and this is what I mean, the data just so heavily tells us now that outdoor exposure isn't a thing.
And I suspect suspicious of almost all statistics, it seems like, you know, if there's, unless there's really a broad base of information to base it on, but I.
Well, I was just using one. There's, there's multiple studies. This is, you know, even then, even the CDC had to admit that, yeah, point one percent. But we like to say ten percent still, even though it's really less than one point one percent.
Okay, I think I've got some middle ground here. So we'll, we'll propose that we open it up on the solstice unless the governor provides other guidance, or we can open it up earlier. So if there's a change in the guidance where we can open this up earlier, then we'll do it. Otherwise, it'll be on the solstice.
What change would we be looking for? She's never said we can't use it.
Well, we could, we could probably ask.
Ask her, okay.
We could ask the question. What a concept.
Peter, can you look into that closely on the guidance on, I guess it would be splash pads and fountains?
Right, the, I mean, one of the key differences between that and, and the other amenities is that generally when kids are running through water with paper masks on, they're not going to, or, or a cloth mask. I mean, once masks get wet, we aren't going to use them anymore. And so that's, that was the element that gave me pause and, and that I've raised in the past is that, you know, what, what it says is they can, they can go outside as long as they can socially distance or as long as they're masked up. And because of the unique feature, but I look into splash pads, but because of the unique features associated with water and saturation, that's what made me put the fountain in a slightly different category.
I completely agree to that point and the information that the state has provided about or CDC about, you know, if you're vaccinated or now you're outdoors, you have to wear a mask. I, I feel like it's really fresh. And we need some time of people getting into those practices before we find out if there's any repercussions to it. And this conversation has led to even my kids trying to make waterproof masks, which is terrible because they'll probably suffocate themselves in a plastic bag. You know what I mean? So like, I, I agree with your point, the, the difference is on a playground, you're wearing, you can wear the mask. But if you're running through the fountain, you can't, but that does leave it to the parents' discretion.
Right, and I mean, part of the, part of the challenge with not just this, but the guidance overall is that there's so many things, such as a city council meeting, that don't fit into the category. I mean, my joke to Alex was, I guess we're somewhere between a funeral and a social gathering. Because the social gathering was pretty broad. And, but, you know, there's no, you didn't, like, this meeting doesn't fit and easily fit into a category. And something like that, it just, you know, I wish I could say that everything was consistent and clearly defined and, and all those things, but it's just not. And so a lot of it is, is it more like this or that? And, and I think there are multiple plausible interpretations and that, that everyone's made really valid points. My hope would be that we get some more clarity prior to the opening date that could allow us to say definitely one or definitely that we know, and hopefully that will happen, but I don't know whether it will.
So what do we need?
Well, do you make a motion?
So.
Do we need a motion? Or is it that good direction?
I mean, I think that's pretty clear. So basically, we're turning it on June twenty first unless the governor changes the guidance and indicates something that would allow us clear guidance to do it earlier.
Perfect. All right, the next one, much more fun. I'm making the suggestion renaming of Heritage Park for Mayor Betty Huser Park. You know, she spent ten years from the late seventies to the late eighties as, I believe, the first female mayor of the city of Scapu. I could be wrong. I'd have to look at the list that Susan has, but. I could be wrong. I'd have to look at the list that Susan has, but I can't think of someone before her.
I've got a list. I don't, I think she is the first, you know.
Okay, you have the list.
I, not with me, but.
Yeah, but I've seen the list too and I'm trying to remember.
I'm pretty sure she is.
And between the impact that she had on the city and, and to spend late eighties till this year as the county clerk, I think it'd be a good honor to, this is the type of person I feel like we should honor with naming a park after. And so I just wanted to.
There's a, I, I, this is a comment. I, I agree. I think this is, she'd be a worthwhile good thing to do. There's a lot of things involved with that as the city knows and all the signage and uh, uh, it'd be nice to tie it into our, our, uh, if we can do it, if we're in agreement, uh, to tie it into our hundred year celebration.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I'm absolutely in favor of honoring Betty, uh, in, uh, you know, especially with a park or, or trail or something. When you, when you change names though, you, you create, you create rubs. Um, and Heritage Park with, with the veterans, uh, connections and so forth, I, I think you're gonna create a rub. What, what might be good is we, we, we profess or we, we, uh, uh, have a resolution that the next park is gonna be named after Betty Huser, whether that's, whether that's Vista Park looking over Scapus, which I think would be very appropriate, or, or, or Grabhorn or the fourteen acres out of the airport, whichever next park we have, uh, we, we name that in honor of Betty. And, and, and that'll be a, a resolution that we would pass and we would commit to. Uh, but that'd be my take on it.
What about the Betty Huser Heritage Park?
Well, actually, that was one of the thoughts I had.
That would work too, but.
I mean, I, and that's what I kind of, that was one of my options is because I was thinking about what Joel said there. You know, I mean, she is part of the heritage of Scapus in a lot of ways, you know. After, you know, there's the history book that was written, but it cuts off.
Yeah, she's, she.
And, you know, I mean.
That would work. You're not changing it that way.
Yeah, you're adding.
You're, you're supplementing it.
So, uh, so I don't know if we bring this back as a future process, but I mean, is it, would everyone be in favor of Betty Huser Heritage Park?
I am not in favor of that. Um, I, I agree with Joel in terms of, um, renaming something that exists. We went through this with our street naming process. Um, not to say that she's not worthy of a place in Scapus, um, and that we have to wait so many years till after she dies that we pick up all the skeletons that she had in her closet. I'm not implying that at all. I think, um, uh, it, I think it's still a hard commitment to say that the next park would be a Betty Huser Park. I definitely agree that her name needs to be on some sort of a list where if there is an opportunity for some sort of a dedication, um, you know, there were a lot of other people in our Scapus history that maybe contributed, um, who are just as much worthy to have a park named or renamed after them. Um, so for me, uh, I think initially when we had talked about Betty passing, um, things like, you know, if there's a, a chance to, you know, put a park bench out in, in front of City Hall and have her name on it or something with the, the sculpture or, um, if there is something in the future, an amenity that is coming up. Um, but I, um, uh, I, I have a hard time, um, renaming Heritage Park in the sense that that is one of the oldest parks that Scapus has had. I mean, and everybody knows it as Heritage Park. Um, the connection that Joel again had said with the veterans and it being right here at the, you know, the center of City Hall. So, um, it's not that I'm not in favor of something being named or dedicated Betty Huser. I just, um, I do not, I'm not in favor of either renaming this park or committing to the next park being named after her. I think there's so many other factors. When we look at something, um, you know, when we're thinking about Grabhorn, are there other people in the history of Scapus that should be on that list that we should consider in addition to her or even that family itself? I'm not suggesting that either, but, um.
I do think whether we do this regarding should be unanimous decision. Uh, we don't want to move forward any other way. Uh, but I like the idea of, of compiling some sort of list of, of, of people who have contributed to our community over the years and, and maybe that might be a more uh, fair way to do it, if that's a correct word. Uh, but I can think of other people who have been major contributors to our community that, uh, not say who's more qualified, who gets, but I do, I do understand what she's saying there in regard to that, that maybe we need to have a, a list that we start compiling and maybe these are the people we can consider as we have opportunities to name things, we can pick from that list. Otherwise, we're just kind of shooting from the hip a little bit.
You know, actually, you know, I, I think Megan raises a really interesting point. You know, with the, uh, uh, with the skeletons in the closet thing, you know, we don't, we don't know what, what, what's behind door number three is. So, you know, there's probably no rush, but we just commit to doing some commemorative, uh, uh, something of consequence to, to remember Betty. But we don't have to decide that tonight. We can, we can tab that.
Just wanted to get the conversation started.
We can tab that forward, but I, 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 I like that list approach.
And I, you guys have done so much work already with the centennial planning that there's gotta be some rich history and names that, you know, continue to come up or are really empowering and meaningful and I'm not suggesting that something gets, you know, adopted into the parks plan or anything like that, but if there's an attachment or a list somewhere, so in the future with future councils or opportunities that the staff has for, um, naming things or dedicating things that that list is referenced.
I think we should formalize that recommendation. I don't know if it takes a motion or anything, but it, I think maybe we should compile a list of, uh, prominent citizens that we might want to honor in some manner in the future.
I don't know, formalize or just maybe. It's like Alex is writing it down and.
I'm sure you've done a lot of the legwork.
Yeah, I think, yeah, no kidding.
Well, and we're gonna honor Betty at the event anyway, you know. So, you know, in, in, in some manner. Yeah, I think there's some good points for Mace.
Okay.
But I would do, you know, I hate to just have ideas come up and then they just float away, you know, that happens a lot, uh, but.
Want to make a motion?
Well, we need a motion to establish a list of, uh, of, uh,
Well, you can make a motion direct, city manager to establish a list. But Tyler, what was about?
Yeah, but, okay, this, I, I think think it, we, we should have a, some sort of subcommittee, I think, to build that list. City manager doesn't really know to the history of our community going back, you know, numbers of years. So I would say that uh, I'm gonna make a motion that I guess that, that we form a, uh, remember subcommittee that would develop a list of prominent citizens that we'd like to recognize in some manner, future.
Same emotion. That'd be a kind of a cool activity for the centennial, have a, have a booth and getting community recommendations for, for, for people to, uh, that could commemorate, uh, in the community.
That, that, that'd be great. Yeah, we've got, uh, so we have so many things going right now. I can't keep track.
So I've got a motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion?
Or we pass a motion or?
We'll pass, so we can discuss it.
Okay.
If I have a second.
What, what's the motion?
Motion was to form a three-person subcommittee to look into building a list of historical people to honor at some point in the future.
That could be what they come up with is.
Yeah.
Is it okay if, if the direction is just that the city manager brings this back during some sort of a work session and we, we can, or I mean, or do we just wait until the centennial and get feedback from people? Yeah, I don't think that by directing the city manager, it's not her putting the list together.
No, that's why you hit the, the motion is a subcommittee of like three of us.
Sure, but then the timeline of, that's fine.
Yeah.
Or else we just do nothing?
Oh yeah, we could just see what happens out of the.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Um, it kind of feels like for the carpe diem force a little bit here. Um, why don't we first determine the venue and how we're gonna do this?
Why don't we?
Establish that and then we establish.
Okay.
I mean, we, we obviously do have to have an idea of the number of, of names, a general idea of it.
Well, that list could, yeah, that list could change over time too.
Yeah.
So why don't we just bring this back maybe with a little more structured work session? Since we're at nine o'clock anyway, so we can end the meeting.
And there, there have been people named in, uh, for this, there have been people in our surveys that we've done. Uh, Grabhorn Park, uh, there were a couple of names that were mentioned there. Uh, and so if we are we'd be putting those names somewhere in a list, uh, because they've already been suggested. Uh, so. All right.
I move that we extend the meeting five more minutes past nine o'clock.
Your motion, is there a second? Second, any discussion? All those in favor, state of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Sorry, Pete, we just.
I, I, I don't have any more.
Okay.
I guess we're rambling on you.
All right, well, we still just have the very end. All right, announcements, uh, calendar. What is today? Oh, tax day. Um, our next city council meeting will be June seventh at six P M. Work session, city council meeting at seven o'clock. There's a Scapus Parks Rec meeting at five fifty P M on Thursday. The Grabhorn Parks Ad-Hoc Committee meeting at six P M. Alex, you have anything?
Yes, uh, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to let you all know that I've been working with Senator Johnson to try to secure some of the American Rescue Plan funds for the city. Um, she's been really helpful, so I just wanted to thank her for that and cross our fingers that those um, applications are successful. Um, and then I did receive a question from the city of St. Helens. Uh, Rachel Berry had reached out. She was one who had helped organize the SWAT that you all participated in with the other elected officials, um, gosh, over a year ago now. If there were ever to be some kind of SWAT in the future, you know, looking at any kind of COVID relief money that came from the state and or county that could potentially be distributed to the cities, um, in the area. She was curious if you all would be interested in participating in that.
I did hear that last part.
She was curious if you'd be interested in participating in any kind of um, SWAT, you know, exercise essentially with the elected officials again.
Sure.
Yes, please. All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Cheers.
Okay, uh, two quick things. The sphere is now installed. Hopefully everybody likes where it's at. And the other thing is that Turtech Trailhead, um, trail portion is gonna get paved next week. So there will be some interruptions to the trail, so you all know.
Pete.
Um, I've been going through just the council rules. I've flagged some things for later discussion. Um, I also think it probably makes sense for us to go through the team agreement again and, and to get some clarity around, uh, that document.
Thank you. Officer Miller.
Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the letter that I received, but I don't think we have time to do that. And it does relate to, uh, the team agreement that Peter wants to revisit later. Um, I will tell just in general that the letters that I received that I am being told that I can't share with the rest of council is very heavy and weighing on me. And I think it's unfair for me to be the only council member to have that information. So this is something that is important to me to revisit as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Uh, two things. First of all, I want to thank, uh, Miller and his comments about how they cooperate with the, uh, county agencies. I've known that all along and I just really, it could need to be a lot of clarity there that we.
Pete in the microphone, sorry.
There needs to be a lot of clear, clarity there to the community that we aren't just separate and we don't draw a line and, uh, we do cooperate and we cover them, they, they help us and, uh, and there's a, there's a real procedure that we go through with that. Also, I want to thank, uh, Dave and all their crew with, all they've done with the Turtech Trailhead. It really looks great out there. Appreciate all your work.
What's president?
Um, department heads in here that deserve a, a huge appreciation just for their leadership. Um, First Chief, thank you for, um, instilling in your, um, department just community policing and outreach. Officer Tim was just a breath of fresh air last week, um, out on the skate park with my family, helping Henry, my three-year-old, climb up all over the stuff. He was down on their level, chit-chatting. He said nothing but good things about his seven months time already here in Scapus. Um, so thank you for that. And Dave, um, I'm a sucker for yard work and landscape and City Hall looks amazing and the edging on, um, the highway and um, I've been meaning to do like some public shout out forever for your department because it, it seems like even if I wasn't as involved in the city, there's no way around not noticing your department. I mean, it's, whether it's a truck or a an actual crew member or someone on a mower, or I mean, it's just constant. And I love that buzz because it means that we're hard at work making the best of what we can out of what we have. So thank you for that.
Charlie Hogan.
A couple of quick things. Uh, ORB installation is awesome. It's perfect placement. You couldn't get better than that. So Bravo. Uh, and then on the triptych, uh, update, uh, Michael Curry, uh, we're going to plan B with that. Uh, and he's working on a, uh, on a design, um, donating the design work. And, uh, what he would like to do in a couple of weeks is have a Zoom conference with council to review, uh, the plan that he's, uh, proposing and we can take input at that point. Uh, so heads up on that. If you're properly open that, uh, he'd, he'd be doing it by Zoom. Uh, and so I'm hoping, hoping that everybody will be, uh, tuned into that. Yeah.
Officer Soski.
Uh, tomorrow, the eighteenth is election day, so for the special election, please, uh, remind others to turn in their ballots. Uh, ballot box out front, City Hall goes very well with the new art installation, so I will echo. I was out there the day that it happened and was able to tell the staff how nice it looked and, uh, really appreciate that. Also, we've been getting a lot of great feedback in regards to the skate park and the paint, uh, project that's going on there. It's definitely standing out. Uh, great artwork and the design of it, so it's really nice to see that coming all together. Um, last week I shared, or excuse me, our last council meeting, I shared that our community enhancement program grant applications were, uh, coming due on the twenty fourth. Uh, last week I had an opportunity to go on there and kind of look at the actual application. Um, I would like to make a recommendation to staff or to city manager Alex, uh, that staff review the enhancement application guidelines and also the funding criteria. I think that these types of things continually evolve over time. And so I don't know when the last time it, uh, something like that had taken place of a review of it. I think that it would just be best practice for the city, um, specifically, you know, providing any improvements or best practices that we would look at other programs, uh, that other cities or counties are offering. And then also incorporate some way to have a, um, way for us to have a, a, I guess, a opportunity to have the organizations come and report back on the dollars and how they've been spent and how they were a positive, uh, opportunity or impact for their organization. So, um, with that, next Monday, we will be here going through the budgets. Which is, I think, always an exciting time, or at least some of us will be here, others will be coming in. Again, uh, summer's right around the corner. It's exciting to hopefully get everyone, uh, at least outside and being able to enjoy the weather as it changes. So, thank you.
Thank you. I really, I just wanna, so go back because I looked it up on my phone. City of Portland's, uh, fountains, interactive decorative and drinking and splash pads. Interactive fountains will open in mid-May twenty twenty one. Decorative fountains are reopening this spring. Drinking fountains are open. Splash pads will open daily from Friday, June eleventh through Monday, September sixth, between eleven A M and seven P M. If public health guidance allows on the splash pads. Food for thought, but we're not standing out alone.
A quick question. Are, are fountain, uh, drinking fountains, they're still shut off, correct? And is that a seasonal thing or a COVID thing?
Both.
I mean, we would normally have shut them off until now, um, for freeze protection, but it's COVID right now.
All right, meeting adjourned.